Agenda review and disposition, is there anything to add?
I just have to add under other business, the 2018-19 financial review as well as the audit, review of the audit.
Okay. Minutes of August 5th, 2019.
If I can add just in one thing, in the non-public minutes, under roll call, the members, we just have to list the school board members of the Plymouth School Board, it had the wrong names.
I'll move to accept the minutes, would be one edit as proposed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good deal. Privilege of floor number one. Hi. Any of you guys have anything to say? No? Alright, good deal. We're gonna go to Julie.
Alright, I do have a few pictures to share about our back-to-school, school days. Great energy, good vibes, those are the comments I heard throughout our opening week of school. And as always, the first day with the PTA, setting up Dave Lockwood coming and the table of muffins and coffee, we're really welcoming to families. I think it just felt like a record number of families on the playground this year. In very few tiers, there were a couple, but very few, and Dr. Q and Mr. Sheen were right there on hand. And just a lovely day, weather always helps as well. And then also thank you to the PTA for the grand success of the Welcome Back BBQ. Despite a bit of rain, we, people stayed and endured, it was great. Great to see so many new families as well, as families who have been part of the community. And of course, the teachers and students mingling together. Right after the barbecue was the, the middle school hosted their open house, not only to share the structure for academics, but also important happenings for the overnight trips. So the timing is really perfect for that. We're gonna talk a little bit about the overnight trips after. I'm excited about, this is just another little highlight, I just, we have a lot of fun around here decorating, goal-setting, and so a lot of that happening the last few days. But this, as you know, this summer, we had the Summer Wellness Bingo, which was again a big success. We had 175 students out of approximately 400 total participate, with 28 students completing the entire bingo card. The bingo card generated positive energy and conversations around summer activities. Each student who completed at least 10 squares received a wellness reward, a jump rope, a pair of sunglasses, a water bottle, or a ball. The grade that had the highest percentage of participants gets an extra recess. Second grade had 65% participation, second place was third grade, and third place was first grade, those primary grades. So we'll be giving them an extra recess. And a big shout-out of gratitude goes to our eighth graders, Addie England and Leo Ebner, who really developed and implemented the whole project. That's great. And the last thing I have for this evening is I'm so grateful, last year we had Ty Gagney come and speak to our faculty and to our eighth graders. Ty is the CEO of Primex, the risk management firm, and also the author of Where You'll Find Me by Kate Metastrofa. But his focus was on situational awareness. And what I really appreciated was that he said is beyond the trail, on the situational awareness, that it's driving in a car, it's at a social party, to, you know, building this culture of trust. He focused on the human factor, the physical factors, and the environmental factors in our decision-making and trust-building. We also took a little bit of time to talk about the whole writing process and his approach to writing as well, so that was great. And this, last but last, not least, we have our eighth-grade trip, which I know Kelly's gonna talk a little bit about as she went up, Greenleaf?
Greenleaf this year, yep.
Four thousand footers. But just some upcoming dates, this Thursday, September 12th, we have open house for grades one through five, Scholastic Book Fair, and on the 12th and 13th, we have the sixth and seventh grade overnight trips, and School Picture Day. And I just wanted to throw out there, November 5th is Parent/Teacher Conference Day, which was also Election Day. I also left the enrollment for you, and just going down, we're up to 407, which, you know, when we cross 400 is something we do occasionally, I don't think we did last year, I don't think we hit 400 last year. But every class since August has gone up, and two have stayed the same, second grade has stayed the same, and third grade has stayed the same. In second grade, I know we're watching that closely, it's 16 and 16, and really, in, I believe it's Ms. Stokely's class, it's 15, because we have to keep one student on our class, on our roster until we hear where that person is, so it's 15 and 16. But a great start, many of the move-ins are special needs, and so that has created, you know, a lot of energy and focus around managing their plans as well. Very impressed with the team that went up the mountains, as they're all here today, and looking pretty chippers.
So I'll start off with the notch trip then, since Julie just kinda left it, although I will say that I think I used an entire bottle of Icy Hot. But yeah, we had a total of 54 students and 18 adults that made the trek up again to the AMC huts, and again, we go to the Greenleaf, Galehead, Lonesome Lake, which is Cannon, and Mitzvah are the four trails that we do. And we couldn't have asked for better weather. You know, I've been going on the trip since I've got here, and this year was definitely the best weather by far that we've had. Last year, the bus pulled away and the skies opened up on us. So, but through all of it, our kids are always troopers, they do a great job. Just wanted to comment a little bit about the crews up at the AMC hut. You know, every year we go up, and it's generally younger college kids that might be taking a gap year, or have recently graduated, and a variety of different backgrounds, could be an English major or a biology major, and so the kids are getting treated to kind of some of their expertise. And they're great with the food and any of the dietary needs that the kids have, everything is prepped. I mean, the first thing when we walk through the door, they're greeting us and they're asking us about the meals and making sure that our kids are all set. They offer, you know, small little educational, you know, lectures when they're up there, it could be on the hut history, or plants and vegetation, talking about the trail development, overall sustainability of the trails, and just enjoying the White Mountains overall. And every morning, we are woken up to some lovely singers. This year at Greenleaf, the girl had a beautiful voice and played the guitar and had Little Beatles waking me up in the morning, so it's great, kids love that. They put on some small skits and always are giving us the weather reports and that for the day, and for all the other hikers that are there. So they do a nice job. Many thanks go out to Paula Tanner, Andy McDonald, Kevin Greener, and Jen Weatherby for always organizing the trip and making sure the kids are prepped and ready to go for it. Our medics this year on the trails were Scott Southworth, Eli Chamberlain, Greg England, and Christian Basson, and we're always very thankful, they're invaluable and really comforting to have on the trail with us. The students, I'm always so impressed of, it's a hard hike, and some of them are really challenged, and I think it's a great way to start their eighth-grade year together, they are extremely supportive of each other. It's nice to see that leadership, you know, kinda come out from, sometimes from kids you don't expect it to come out from, and they're, they just do awesome with it. And they complete their assignments up there, they're writing as we're up on the summit, they're drawing pictures, they're collecting data, you know, all those good things, and we made sure that it was all done before they left the next day. So we're always proud of how they represent us up there, and I enjoy going on that trip, even though I used an entire bottle of Icy Hot. It's good. Switching over to athletics, we've only had our football team opened up their season this past Saturday, they were down at John Stark, suffered a pretty tough opening loss against what sounded like a more experienced team, but our numbers are up in football, I think we've got 27 there now, which is great. But it's a mix of kids that maybe aren't coming with a lot of experience, so coaches are doing a good job with them, they did have a lot of positives to build off of. Our other teams are opening up this week, today we've got field hockey's on the road over to Laconia, tomorrow cross-country heads to Guilford, and on Wednesday, we'll be hosting volleyball, field hockey, and football teams against Gillington, Berlin, and Kennett. And the soccer teams will open up their seasons the week of the 16th. And so just to give you some of our numbers, right now, our cross-country team is at 17, field hockey has 39, football 27. Our fifth and sixth co-ed soccer is a total of 32, 13 of those being girls, 19 boys. Seventh and eighth grade boys soccer has 19, and our seventh and eighth grade girls soccer has nine. So we'll be pulling up those, a lot of those sixth graders to, you know, to help complete that team. And volleyball has 13, so we're at a total of 156 all athletes out there, which is great. And all the paperwork's in, which is even better. So, coaches have been doing a great job prepping the kids, we've had a lot of good practices, I was just out watching some this afternoon. The other piece is, we always do the baseline concussion testing. One of the things that we experimented last year with was Deb McManus and John Bruley doing that during Deb's health classes. So we took the seventh grade class last year, this year's eighth graders, and did that testing with them. So they'll be continuing that, and then that way too, we get all of the fifth graders, sixth graders, seventh, eighth, not just the ones that are playing a fall sport, so then they're set for the season if they decide to do something for the year. So we'll be doing that. And our safety committee, back on August 20th, we did have that tabletop training with Plymouth PD and New Hampshire Homeland Security. We had 75 or more support staff, faculty members that took part in that. The feedback on it was really positive, I think it was a good experience. And, you know, our faculty and that really appreciated it, and we got good feedback from New Hampshire Homeland as well. At the end, they will send us out a report eventually, just of things that they, you know, might suggest, but generally, when they were leaving, you know, they're letting us know we were in pretty good shape. Our safety committee had their first meeting September 4th, they reviewed the tabletop as well, felt that it all went well. And then we've just got a couple of things coming up, we held our first fire drill today, which went really well. And we've got a bus evacuation set for Tuesday, September 24th, and we will hold a secure classroom drill at some point too, before the month is out as well, working on Chief LaFabe with that, and of course, always repeating fire drills and all those things as we go. So, that's it.
Perfect, thank you. Claims and payable?
It made its way around the table, yep.
And there is some correspondence that I'm going to read. To the Plymouth Elementary School Board, "Thank you for your time. In last year's budget, we had to provide $100,000 for the maintenance/repair of the roof. This was something that needs to be done every 10 years, but we were able to skate 12 to 13 years before the repairs, I believe. I would like to request that the school board consider adding a capital reserve where $10,000 is allocated to the roof repair each year over the next 10 years, so that when the roof is due to be repaired, it will not be a hardship on taxes, and we will be prepared for it. Thank you for your time, Jenny Tivo, parent to first grader August, and pre-K miracle."
And also recent, so recently you select?
Correct, yeah. So, I can put that in the minutes. Discussion items, the school board priorities.
So last month, we had talked about this, we tabled it till this month because you had been out. But if you looked at the attachment in your packet, there is a couple samples, school board priorities, and I would just ask, not only for our direction from the administrators, also for your direction, kind of what are your general goals for this year? Anything you want to accomplish specifically, or maintain, or improve? So you can have just a few of them, or more than a few, but you can see there's, these are some examples from our other school boards, it's just something that keeps us focused on what your priorities are for the community as well. So it's the discussion that you would have.
I like all of these. They're all important.
Do you wanna table this and come back to it next month?
You can come back to it again after you look at it, absolutely, just to give some time to think about it. But there's some examples to go by, whether it's community outreach, academic improvement, if you're looking at, you know, policies, or just something that you as the community are working on, that you'd like to see from us this year too. Okay?
Thank you. Employment references and verification policy.
So this is a first read in your packet, you'll see the policy in regards to background checks, and employment references in regards to sexual offenders too. So this is a first read, we don't have to do any discussion tonight, so if you can read it over the next month, come back with any questions that you may have, but it's our reporting responsibilities in regards to us, if it's reported to us, and that the person decides to work elsewhere, there's certain guidelines that we need to follow. And it's new policy that's required for the school boards. And so this is the one recommended by the New Hampshire School Boards Association, so it's pretty...
Is this going to be adopted by each of the?
Yep, we're bringing it to each of our districts, yep. Yeah, and basically, when we have some lighter agendas, we'd like to put a couple policies in there, so you guys stay compliant with what's required for that. So this is a pretty straightforward one, basically regurgitates the law of what we're required to do if there is an employee that does something they're not supposed to.
What's the, so what's the legal standard? Is it a conviction, is it a plea deal, is it an allegation?
So this is in regards to just reporting to the next employee too. So it could be, we're required to report not only to DCYF, the police, and then the Department of Ed if it's one of our employees as well, so we also, it's requirements on any hunch, so they, then they take it from there. I don't know if that answered your question.
So, I think so. Scenario, someone is accused of something happening here that they're not supposed to do, goes to court, gets thrown out, dismissed, whatever, does it still get reported?
So, it gets reported right away in the internal investigation, yes.
Right, I get that, but if the case is dismissed, or found to be, whatever, legal action is taken, and assuming, you know...
And in the court system, it's dismissed.
Says, hey, yeah, no, this is dismissed, then?
Then it's, then my assumption is we don't, we don't, we don't have to follow that, but if it's something, it's basically laid out right in there.
I just, I get reporting allegations, but we also have to look out.
Yes.
Allegations are one thing, and then the whole legal process sometimes results in another?
Absolutely.
Outcome.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
Thank you.
Carla, can you clarify D here? I just wanna make sure I'm reading it correctly. The case or investigation remains open, and there have been no charges filed against or indictment of the school employee, so that means that they have to bring charges within four years of the date that it's reported? And if they're not brought, then?
Correct.
The?
It gives us the guidelines for that piece, yeah.
Okay.
It's supposed to be the case instead of he case. And if you have any questions, email me, I can also, you know, if there's anything you wanna add or any questions, I can, I can look into it further with our attorney as well.
That's fine, I think after reading it...
Yeah, it's pretty, yeah.
It answers my question.
Yeah. Yeah, it answers it right in there.
Yep, thank you.
So you want us to read this and review it?
Yeah, and you can either, sometimes it's, the school boards take three reads, or if you're comfortable with it next month, we can go on the second read too, so just, we wanna move it...
You'll put it back on the agenda for next month.
Yep.
And then 2018-19 financial review.
Alright, so I passed around, the first piece I wanted to report out is that we did have our audit, and there were no major findings, so I'll just pass it around, if you wanna take a look at the detail of the summary. In front of you is Plymouth School District fiscal ending year 6/30/2019, so I'm gonna briefly go over what's contained in this report. It's something to keep handy as we move through this year's budget process, it shows you where you ended off, what you ended up with, with revenues, any capital reserves that you may have, any funding from the lunch programs, and so on. So, as you know, last year on the second page, I'm just gonna jump ahead, slow me down if you need to, and I'm gonna, second page, if you scroll down to the bottom, the FY19 unreserved fund balance was 86534, so to the good. On the third page goes over your revenues, so you'll see on the right-hand column are the differences, catastrophic aid is something at the top that we recoup money for special ed students that exceed tuition, three and a half times the cost, so we projected $10,000, you actually received $60,406 for those that are exceeding the cost. Adequate education grant, you exceeded that by 9,024 than what was expected, National Forest Reserve is around the same. Medicaid is also funds that are recouped for any students with IEPs for occupational therapy, physical therapy, counseling services, rehabilitative assistance for those students that are Medicaid eligible. We budgeted $100,000, you receive back more than that, $139,602. Jumping down to state kindergarten aid, you know how kindergarten is funded through Keno and through a flat rate as well, so you received $32,030 for your kindergarten. IDEA reimbursement is a special ed grant, we projected $175,000, you received $250,394, so you exceeded that. We have not projected as much in the federal grants, just because they have been declining, so that's why we've underestimated those a bit. Services reimbursed, so that's any additional services that wasn't projected. Jumping down to preschool, so that's your regular preschool, as far as that goes, so revenues from that is $35,099. Special ed, so that's any specialized, special ed programs that are coming into the district, so if they're in the behavioral programs, or we have students in preschool that have special ed programs, that's the tuition coming in for that, so you're expecting $150,000, you received $194,423. Regular ed tuition is just any student tuitioning into the district. So you received a little bit less than that, we were projecting $125,000, you received $85,000.
Carla, how many tuition students do we have?
I don't have that number off the top of my head right now, but...
We have two special education tuition students, the others could come from Ellsworth, I think. I think there's an agreement.
Yeah, yeah, but we can get those, those numbers for you.
Thank you.
The PEP program is money paid towards the preschool, so that's a little bit, parents paying that in, so we projected around $30,000, that's a moving target, $23,129 is what was received. Jumping down, transfer from capital reserve, $60,000 is what was budgeted, $55,346 was the actual miscellaneous. That was a rebate in Primex this year, we did, I did ask Dan Rosner, our business administrator, about that. It's just they had a fund balance, and I believe they gave some funds back.
That's insurance.
Insurance, yep. Unreserved fund balance from last June was $126,282, so that is what is on the right-hand side as well. So at the bottom, total general fund to the good of $61,551, the bottom right number. Revenues are moving targets, as you know firsthand. The next page is the food service fund, so I'll just bring you to the balances, $524.60, and that's from kids paying in, what we're, what the subsidy is, and the balance from that as well.
I had a question about that, that I had written on my other one that I have.
Sure.
We increase the cost of meals for students by 10 cents this year, you think that will make a difference in what we're gonna?
It will make a little bit of a difference if the same amount of kids are purchasing hot lunch.
Okay.
Yep. And then your free and reduced number changes quite a bit too, so that's a moving target like special education as well, so that's, if they're on a, if they're paying less or it's free lunch, then it won't count, so it's a crap shoot.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Can I interject a question?
Yeah.
Do we, do we have our numbers on what percentage of the students qualify for free and reduced lunch?
October 1, that count comes out, so right now, we're collecting all the forms and getting everything organized with the increase in some of the homeless situations that we have too, so we'll have all those numbers. October 1 is usually your official enrollment count, as well as your free and reduced lunch count as well.
I thought it would be around this time of year sometime, but...
It's getting there, we're collecting right now. And then the last page is your capital reserve funds, your balance at the bottom for your building maintenance fund at $6,017.52, and then you don't have a special ed capital reserve, so that's at zero. So it's kinda the state of the state as where you ended last year. It was close, as you know, this year's budget's pretty tight as well, just from the fluctuating revenues.
Looking at other capital reserve funds and the letter that we received today, do we have a building maintenance capital reserve at this point? And if we do, can we request that we save that with an additional $10,000, interrupt our budget for next year?
Yeah, and you can do that through a warrant article as well, I mean, you can use, you can just post it as that, or more than that.
Okay. Does it need a warrant, or can we include it in the budget as a, just not as a?
Yeah, you can just put building improvements, it wouldn't be part of your capital reserve fund.
Okay. What I'm wondering is, do we have a facilities capital reserve, which?
Yes, you already have, and your building maintenance funds, that is your capital, that's what you would put into.
And we just need to add more to that next year?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure why.
Yeah, that's okay.
We don't need a special one.
It's called all different.
It's that one, right.
All different words, so.
That's good.
But it's something to definitely think about, if you have some big projects coming up, some of our other districts do it as well. Alright?
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is anyone on here? Privilege of floor number two. Yes, Anne?
I have a quick, comparing the numbers with sports, I'm curious, I can't remember those, but how is the money allocated per athletic? Is it per student to each sport, or there's four fall sports, and we take the budget, and each sport gets an equal amount? How does the budget?
Yeah, it's not divided out per sport, you know, each area, there's so much money for supplies, there's so much money for equipment, and so, you know, basically, having been an athletic director prior to coming here for 15 years, I always do it on a needs basis. At the end of every season, I'll ask the coaches to give me what they absolutely need for the following season, then maybe they can provide me with a little wish list, and we try to work within the budget. But basically, every sport, every team is going to get what they need to run their season within the budget that we have. But it's not divided out to this team gets this amount, and this team gets this amount.
Okay. Oh, yes.
I also wanna just speak in defense of the letter that you received. I think, given how challenging the budget cycle always is, planning ahead and saving money for the expenses we know are gonna happen, for example, replacing the roof, would be a really good move by the selected, and generally, by the school board, ultimately by the selected, to just make our budgets more predictable, and I know that there's been some resistance in town to doing that in the past, but I would strongly encourage the school board to move towards... but I would strongly encourage the school board to move towards better long-term fiscal.
Thank you. Oh, I may. Motion to go into non-public.
Second?
All in favor?
Are we good?